Thank you very much, Mark. I'm Mark Lemay at WHAV Studio. Welcome, everyone, to the 2025 Haverhill School Committee Candidate Forum. I want to thank our sponsor, Pinnacle Co-Working and Event Space, represented here by George Peters and Seth Cordes. Make sure I get it right. Anyway, the Haverhill School Committee is going to look substantially different come January with more than half of its existing members not seeking reelection. So this is your chance to become familiar with the candidates running in what will be one of the most consequential local elections of the year. Tonight, we're going to hear from both the at-large candidates for school committee. We will also hear from the ward candidates. And I'm going to, I, the, the home audience can do whatever they want, but the, in, the audience here at Pinnacle Co-Working Space, we're going to ask to hold, hold your applause. No rooting, if you will, no, no rude comments. I think this is, this, I think I know everyone in the room, so I don't think that's going to be a problem this time. Not always that case. All right. We have the at-large candidates set up here in, in ballot order. That's how we'll go for this first round. In ballot order, this year's at-large school committee candidates are Penelope Gueiro, Josiah Morrow, Davis Nguyen, Tody Sapienza Donay is running. She is not present tonight. Fred Simmons and Daniel Sfikis. Now, even though this is Haverhill's second local election with ward representation, it's actually the first time Haverhill voters will actually elect the at-large candidates. And for those of you who might be wondering why, the legislation that created the, the new system in Haverhill allowed three members who were elected in 2021 to four-year terms to retain their seats. So this will be the first time that those seats are available. They were filled in 2023 by Paul Magliacetti, Richard Rosa, and Morant Ryan Ciattadello, who are grandfathered in. This year, members Magliacetti and Rosa chose to step down, and I would like for the audience to give them a round of applause for their many years of service to the community. Ms. Ryan Ciattadello also decided to run for a ward seat, Ward Three. As far as I know, she is not going to be present tonight as well. Candidates will be asked to give one-minute answers to what we think will be six questions. Retired school committee member Rosa has volunteered to be our timer, and he will hold up a yellow card when you have 15 seconds left. He will hold up the red card when you are out of time. The enforcer hasn't been chosen, but we'll find someone to make sure you stay in line. All right. I would like to thank the, the at-large candidates. Let's go right, we'll, we'll start again with ballot order, and I'm going to need some of you to keep me honest when I forget people, so we'll, we'll try to do this. All right. Beginning with Penelope Gueiro. Some candidates are calling for higher pay for teachers, paraprofessionals, or ESPs and other staff, as well as hiring guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, and psychologists. How do you balance higher wages with the need for adequate staff?
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I think the balance needs to come by looking closely at the budget. We had conversations earlier this week, and there was talk about getting into the details of the budget and doing an audit of what the whole HPS looks like. I think that is one, a place to start. I think every decision we need, needs to put students first, so I wouldn't want to do things that will be detrimental to their education.
Thank you for your time. Same question for Josiah Morrow. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, no, thank you. Thank you, Tim, and thank you to all the hosts this evening. It's such an important part of our civic process to have these forums. When we take a look at the budget, you know, a big part of my professional experience is working with businesses and organizations regionally every day on their budgeting needs. And in a similar way, we have got to look at the issue of prioritization. The top priority of the school committee in our spending needs to be student needs, and we need to be clear that every cent, every dollar, particularly in tight budget times, is going towards positions, policies, and programs that directly benefit students. If that requires administrative rearrangements or things that don't directly impact student performance and academic outcomes, then those are things we need to evaluate. But it requires a line-by-line evaluation of how we're allocating our resources to make sure that we do have the adequate staffing and the adequate ability to retain teachers.
Thank you. Davis Nguyen, would you need me to repeat the question? Some candidates are calling for higher pay for teachers, paraprofessionals, also known as ESPs, and other staff, as well as hiring guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, and psychologists. How do you balance higher wages with the need for adequate staff?
So I'd like to take a look at the budget report, and then from there, we can able, we'll be able to figure out where we need to make cuts. All I know is that, I don't know what the budget report looks like, but all I know is that in my profession in accounting and finance, what I do is I take clients, and then from there, I see where they're losing money, and I help, I help them save money, which flips their company around, making them more profitable at the end of the year. And that's what I would do with the school budget.
Thank you very much. Fred Simmons. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No. I believe that doing forensic scope on the budget will actually be the way to go if we can find any monies to use. The only way that we can help improve mental health services is, is basically what we're trying to do right now. We have some in-house, and we outsource some. I'd really, in my personal opinion, I'd like to have everything in source, whether we use our health teachers, which we do, but our nurses, which we do. But I really believe that maybe there should be stipends that actually will help them versus paying a full license. And if we need a full license, then they, they recommend the next, um, they ma, they recommend the next sound steps. Obviously, the budget is always something to go over. City of Haverhill has $39 million from just the city side alone. They have the state, and we're worried about our federal budget. The federal budget, obviously, is because of the administration we have now, but hopefully we can change that as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you. And Daniel Sfikis.
Thank you for that. Everybody on the panel is talking about the budget and talking about audits, and I believe that that is the number-one step. A really, really great audit, looking line by line. I mentioned in, in the form that we had the other night that there are duplicate positions in, especially in admin in the city. That needs to be looked at. They're redundant. There's really no need for them. Assess that situation, and also, staff members in the schools deserve to be paid, especially when they're being paid less than surrounding districts. So I think utilizing more grant funding, really seeking out extra grant funding, and really pushing for reform on Chapter 70, which is the, the government funds that come from us, come to us. Excuse me. I think marginalized districts like Haverhill, like Lawrence and communities that are similar, have similar demographics, are really thrown to the side with the way that the formula is. So we need to assess that.
Thank you very much. Seth, before we go on to the next question, Studio was saying we could use a little more gain if you can. Thank you. Pardon the technical side here, but I have to play two jobs here. So thank you. All right, we're going on to question number two. What can be improved in the current teacher contract bargaining with the Haverhill Education Association that's based on lessons we've learned from the conclusion of two years of negotiation with ESPs and the safety concerns of teaching staff that was reported on the news earlier this week? We're going to start with Josiah Morrow this time.
Thank you. My background, in addition to the budgeting piece, is in contract negotiation and regularly negotiating employment contracts in the staffing and recruiting world. And what I've learned over the years from that is that the number-one piece in order to have a successful contract negotiation is to have clear communication between the potties. You know, my conversations with both school committee members and teachers, there's definitely room for improvement from a communication standpoint, making clear goals and what can be realistically offered upfront. In addition to that, we need to really strongly prioritize having benchmark agreements before we get to the final outcome, identifying things that can be agreed on to prioritize the top issues. And finally, timeliness, making sure we're well ahead of deadlines to make sure contracts are in place long before we get to the point where teachers or ESPs or other entities are working without contracts.
Okay. Davis Nguyen, do you need me to repeat the question? Sure. Well, because they're, they're complicated. What can be improved in the current teacher contract bargaining with the Haverhill Education Association based on the lessons we've learned from the conclusion of two years of negotiations with ESPs, plus what we've, what we've heard about safety concerns from the teachers in the, in the past week? What could be improved?
We're going to be improving the school, like...
Yeah, what could be improved in the negotiations with teachers, since those are ongoing?
Okay. So what can we approve is, we, we just got to listen to the teachers and see what they want, and then try to get them more resources to help the students out so they can graduate. I'm going to be honest, I'm, I don't know the answer to this question, so.
Okay. Well, we, we'll move on, and now we're going to go to Fred Simmons.
I've been in negotiations on the opposite side of the table for more than 28 and a half years. I have the experience of negotiating, and I know what it's like to have difficult negotiations. I believe that it wants you in place a good-faith bargaining agreement, and, and move from that, and treat each other like equals, not oppositions, and, and, and listen. Listen is the key part of negotiations. You don't have to accept everything, but you have to listen. And it's really important that people understand that we're not trying to hurt anybody, but we got to only give what we can give, and we're going to look at the best way that we can find more funding for, so we can actually help. The improvement of the schools in some ways is, is an ongoing thing. This is the time that we have people coming in, our famous little critters coming in and bringing all kinds of X stuff we talk about, but we have to put out our pads and stuff to make sure that we take care of them. There's ongoing ventilation issues, and that's always been ongoing since I've worked there. I worked 28 and a half years for the City of Haverhill, and I know. Thank you.
Thank you. And Daniel, am I getting better at pronouncing? Sfikis?
Yeah, that's close. Thank you so much.
You need me to repeat the question?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I feel like there's a lot that should have been learned over the last few years, the last contract negotiation. When it comes down to it, I think the key word is collaborate. The, the superintendent, the school committee, the, the teachers' union should be working as a team, because the number-one goal is to provide a better education for the students. So obviously, we don't have an ever-last, ever-ending budget, so it has to be reasonable. But when it comes down to it, we need to collaborate. There can't be games. There can't be meetings scheduled, people not showing up and then canceling meetings. People have to listen to each other, like, like Fred said. There needs to be teamwork, and that's, that's one of the biggest issues. We can't have the, the sides going against each other. So that's, that's the number-one thing.
Thank you very much. And circling back, Penelope Gueiro. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Sure.
All right. What can be improved in the current teacher contract bargaining with the Haverhill Education Association that's based on lessons learned from the conclusion of two years of negotiation with the ESPs and, as of this week, the safety concerns the teaching staff reported?
So I agree with Dan. I think the first thing that comes to mind is collaboration, is working as a team, holding hands, making sure that we keep students at the forefront, and always keeping what is best for students first. I think the safety issue is really concerning. These are the, the reports and the issues that were reported are things that have been going on far longer than probably most of our school committee members that are in place now have been there. When you talk about rodents and mold, these aren't things that happen overnight. So I think really addressing those issues, making sure that teachers have a comfortable, safe environment to work in, should be priority.
Thank you. Moving on. For the past few years, Haverhill has been unable to fill and keep the number of paraprofessionals needed to provide required services under the special education law for students. Considering the increasingly important role ESPs play in helping these most vulnerable students succeed, what would you propose to tackle this issue? And we will start with Davis Nguyen.
Would this be a budgeting, or would it be resources?
Well, I guess it's up to you to, up to you to propose, so...
Okay. So like I said, my background is in accounting and finance, so I would have to take a look at the budget and then figure out what we need to do for the teachers, whether we're going to increase their wages or increase their benefits, whether that's vacation time, 401(c)(3) B match, or just higher pay. So we have to take a look at everything and then kind of figure everything from there going forward.
Thank you. And Fred Simmons, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yeah.
All right. For the past few years, Haverhill has been unable to fill and keep the number of paraprofessionals, ESPs, needed to provide required services to special education students. Considering the increasingly important role ESPs play in helping these most vulnerable students succeed, what would you propose to tackle this issue?
Well, there's nothing like an ESP in a room. It's the right hand of a teacher. They are there to help, and I've actually have special-needs student of my own, it's my son, and he's been out of school for a while, and so it did help by having an ESP in there. There is always, it goes back to monetary, trying to get qualified people to stay, and that's the number-one goal that we need to do. They should be making a living wage or as close as we can until we have more funding coming in, whether it's from the government, or, I mean, the state, government, or even grant funding. We have to keep our ESPs and then make them understand that we're doing the best we can if we get in. I am a good person to look at finances, especially with people like Tom Grumman. I'll actually be looking with stuff like that with him. He's an excellent person with numbers, and I will definitely be there to help. Thank you.
Daniel Sfikis.
Pay them. It's basically what it comes down to. They went two years, you know, with wages that were much less than the surrounding communities, and then it was determined that the city had the money but didn't want to spend it. I understand there's a lot that goes on behind closed doors, and there's a lot of things that need to be addressed, but you're talking about people that are not helpers. They're not helpers. They're, they're teachers. They're, they have a different, they have a different title, but I work with them every day at school, and the things that they have to deal with and what they provide to the schools, it's of the utmost importance. So we're not asking, we're not, ESPs aren't asking for $120,000 a year. I think that it's ridiculous that they went that long without a contract. I think that they are very important, and I also sort of disagree with what Davis was saying, because there's no way to add vacation days. It's not going to happen in a contract at a school, but we can talk about that another time.
Thank you. Penelope Gueiro, would you need me to repeat the question?
Sure.
For the past few years, Haverhill has been unable to fill and keep the number of paraprofessionals needed to provide required services to special education students. Considering the increasingly important role ESPs play in helping these most vulnerable students succeed, what would you propose to tackle this issue?
I agree to, that we need to pay them. I think they do play a critical role in the classroom. I had a nephew that also required extra help, and his ESP was not only part of his daily life, but she actually went above and beyond and would contact us outside of the school to make sure that he was okay, and she's still in touch. So that's valuable. I think to families, that's an extra help that you don't always need, or you don't always get the help for, and it's a real need. I feel that paying them, finding other incentives, finding a pathway, I know there's a clear pathway for people to move up based on education, but also creating other incentives and possibly finding partnerships within the city where maybe they can get extra training.
Okay. Josiah, do you need me to...
No, thank you.
Josiah Morrow, thank you.
When you work in the world of employment and labor, you understand that people leave situations for two reasons, and that's compensation, and that's the environment where they feel valued. On the compensation piece, it gets back to a budget prioritization. We, we all know how important ESPs are, and we need to equate that when we're working on our budgeting process to make sure that they're equitably valued. Now, in terms of the tenor piece, when you have a district go for two years with those negotiation issues, that becomes difficult to attack top talent, because there's a concern about being valued, and there's a concern about the perception of them by that. So for the new folks who are going to be on the school committee, that really comes back to having the correct skill set of communication, working with folks, and being in constant communication with them to let them know that their work is needed and valued, and create a positive environment for them to serve in.
Thank you. Our next question. Would you support putting some teeth into a recent school committee policy that requires members attend 85% of regular subcommittee and union negotiation meetings? Such actions could be some form of censure, or, if you pardon the term, public shaming. We'll start with Fred Simmons.
I don't believe we need to tie and feather them, but I do believe that they should show up. You're elected to represent the community, and some of the parts about representing the community is to be there and to listen. I've said this before in earlier speech, you have to listen to everybody, and this is what goes on, and the only way we're going to work is working together, and this is some of the things that I believe in. So key, listen, that's the number-one, and we can all work together as a community and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, I should point out that of these questions, some were submitted online by various residents who filled out the form, and others were prepared by the committee. And we'll go next to Daniel Sfikis. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, sir, thank you. I'll make this pretty quick. Basically, when it comes down to it, like Fred said, when you're elected, you're elected to do a job. You know, barring any extenuating circumstances, I think that people should show up. You're elected to represent the people of the city to help the students. So when it comes down to it, they should be, I don't know what the number would be. What was the number that you, you said? Was it 85%?
85%.
85% seems reasonable, but I mean, that's going to take, again, collaboration and, and talking about it, but it's, it's necessary for you to be there. And if you're missing meetings, you can get, you know, the, what do they call them? The, I forget what they're called, like the crib, what are the crib, crib notes? Remember when we were in high school, what were they called?
Oh, the Cliffs.
Cliff, yeah, Cliff note, thank you.
Cliff notes.
Cliff notes. You could get that version, but not being there, you don't have a sense of the body language of the people across from you. You don't have the sense of the tone, so I think that that's important to be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Penelope Gueiro, would you like me to repeat the question?
I got this one.
Okay, go ahead.
It's 85% of the time, yes. And you have an, an option to be virtual, so yes, if you're elected to be, to represent a district, if you're elected to represent a ward, the people that elected you are expecting you to show up. I don't know why anyone would go through this process and then not show up for the job. I don't, that makes no sense to me. So my answer is, I agree. I was actually there on Thursday when they adopted it, and I think it's a great policy to have.
Thank you very much. Josiah Morrow.
Well, I fully support the policy and think 85% is a very reasonable number. You know, I served and have led on many boards and committees, and you cannot get the job done if you're showing up less than that, be it virtual or in person. I think the key piece of this is that the ultimate accountability of any elected official is to the voters, and it's a great honor to be elected, and that needs to be deeply, deeply respected and held sacred by doing the job.
Thank you very much. Davis Nguyen.
Of course, I agree. I think it should even be 90% to 100%, because all the nonprofits I'm on and all the boards I'm on, I show up to all the meetings, I show up all to the events, and if you're not there for any of the events or the meetings, you kind of don't know what's going on, and then, like Dan said, with the cliff notes, it, it doesn't, doesn't look good at the end. You'd rather be there, give your input in front of everyone, and then they can go back and forth and kind of discuss on what you have to say, so...
Thank you. Next question. The most recent Haverhill third-grade MCAS English Language Arts scores rose. They went up from the previous year. Do you have any ideas on how to continue that momentum? And we'll start with Daniel Sfikis.
Thanks, Tim. I think continue doing what we're doing, continue to, continue to provide the education that these kids deserve. I think we saw a real huge impact from COVID. You know, you're looking at kindergarten kids, first grade, second grade. Nobody can learn to read on a computer virtually. We, we saw it firsthand. So I think we're getting out of, out of that, the COVID years, and I think that the, the teachers put in effort every single day, and what they're doing is working. I think that always finding more funding and trying to find resources that will help the students, just like they do now, just continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Penelope Gueiro.
That was great news to hear, that the, the numbers had risen. Third-grade reading level is so, it's so important for the rest of a student's career. So I think we, by continuing that momentum, we kind of need to look across the board what's really working and double down on that, and make sure that we're doing that across all schools and all grade levels.
Josiah Morrow.
Well, this gets back to two points, and, and one important point to continue that momentum is the allocation of resources. And get back, as we spoke about earlier, making sure that our resources are being spent effectively, efficiently, and towards academic outcomes. I think that also the piece when enhancing, you know, working with children, particularly in English and literacy, is the excellent opportunity for community partnerships. We have great entities in Haverhill already working on this, and there are businesses and nonprofits in our community that I'm sure would be willing to continue doing that, to expand that. I myself, several years ago, ran the Literary Zoo over at the Wood School focused on child literacy. So getting more folks involved to help out and pitch in and make sure that our children are equipped at that level and continuing to improve is a lot of opportunity we had there.
Thank you. Davis Nguyen.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, sure. The most recent Haverhill third-grade MCAS, the standardized test, English Language Arts scores rose compared to the previous year. So they went up. Do you have any ideas on how to keep that momentum going?
Just keep everything the same right now, and then even improve on that. I believe high school kids in Haverhill, do they have to do extracurricular, not extracurricular, what are those hours? Is it extracur, volunteer hours?
Yes.
So maybe we can have the high schoolers volunteer at the Haverhill Public Library, and then tutor the students more. So then it'll give them their volunteer hours, plus it'll help encourage the students to come there, like the first, second, third graders, so they can learn more and then be tutored extra on the side.
Thank you. And Fred Simmons.
Again, it's a great that they've, the third graders have actually improved their reading skills, but it actually starts from day one when they enter their schools. They got to really start improving the minute they start walking the door, because up to age three, that's when they're the biggest sponges. I mean, up to grade three, they're the biggest sponges to absorb the education process. We got to have our parents get more involved in reading. They can come in, I believe we could set up a task force to have people come in and, and sit with the students and the teachers, and, and actually, if they need the help guidance with the students, this is going to improve the, the younger ones. The other ones, we have Access Club, and they can actually help out a lot more at the end of the day, and the Discovery Club. These, these are great tools that we have. We just got to emphasize the need in using them more, especially where the, where we're lacking in reading skills and mathematics and so on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for keeping us on schedule. We're at the last question for the at-large candidates. The school committee cut $11 million from last year's level services budget, and another $2 million this year, without eliminating any teaching positions. Would you vote to approve a collective bargaining agreement that would result in teacher layoffs because of limited resources? And I believe we're back to the beginning again. So if you would take that, Penelope Guero?
Sure. This is so hard. These decisions are so hard to make, because we want what is best for our students, and what is best for our students is making sure they have the right teachers in place. That's one part of the puzzle. I think the district has done a great job. They have cut so much, and no one has lost their jobs yet. I think they're, we need to commend them for figuring all of that out. I go back kind of to the first question. Let's do an audit. Let's look at the details. Let's go line by line and see where there are redundancies. Where else can we cut before really pulling somebody out of a classroom?
Thank you very much. Josiah Morrow?
Teacher layoffs are not an option. We're already talking about overcrowded classrooms and under-resourced schools. So anything that we can do from a budgetary resource or policy perspective to avoid laying off any teaching and direct academic support positions is, would be my support and priority.
Thank you very much. Davis Nguyen?
So we're going to take a look at the budget, and then I wouldn't want any teachers to lose their jobs or anything like that. Maybe have some of the parents contribute towards the school. For example, buying paper towels, supplies for the teachers to use during class, and then the school doesn't have to come up with that resources to spend. So.
Thank you very much. Fred Simmons?
In a perfect world, I wish all schools were funded fully. But unfortunately, sometimes the, certain lean years, especially with the current administration that's in the Oval Office, we're not going to be getting funding like we usually do. The problem is, is that laying off where we are really lacking on teachers and stuff like this, and support staff, I definitely would be non-negotiable when that comes up. I would look into maybe the office and look down to see if we can scale down maybe some of the extra secretaries or something like that. I hate to say it, but I mean, if we can buckle up and tighten our belts, we could probably use maybe one secretary to handle maybe two people's job, and maybe give them a stipend for handling the extra until we get back, if we have to go to that route. But it's not secretaries, it's HR. If we're overloading, we need to take care of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. And Daniel Sveikus?
Thank you. I would be totally against laying off teachers, ESPs. Like, like Josiah said, any direct student-facing position. We're already overcrowded. You, you eliminate positions, now you're, you're increasing the numbers of kids in a class. And all the data shows that with more kids in a class, less teachers, they don't, they don't learn as much. So that's, that's number one. I think there is a budgetary aspect of this, where you do need to go through, like I mentioned earlier, Penelope just mentioned. There are redundant positions up top. Maybe really analyze those, and unfortunately, if you have to eliminate those, it has to be done. But I'm totally against any direct student-facing positions, teachers, ESPs, losing the, guidance counselors, and anybody in that type of role, losing their position.
Well, thank you very much. We have come to the conclusion of the first half of this, this forum. I was, I'd like to have the audience that's present, and at home, you can do it too, cheer for those who participated tonight. They were very helpful. We're going to take about a 10-minute break. For those of you at home, this is what, what we used to say, we're breaking for station identification. But for those who are here, we're going to be moving some signs around, putting up some new tape. So it'll take us a couple of minutes. So we'll be right back.